All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Phoe.
Here.
Ms. Selesny. Ms. Selesny. Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Weigum.
Here.
Mr. Havas. Ma'am, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into our public hearing. If you haven't joined us before, I will briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number. Read a brief summary of the case. We ask the appellant then to step to the podium and sign in, please. There's a sign-in sheet there. And then state your name and address for the record, and then explain to us what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We will ask you to agree with those or add any other factual information at that time. Then we'll turn it over to the city for a recommendation. We'll open public comment. And at each of those points, we'll ask the appellant if they have anything else they'd like to add to inform the board. Then we'll turn it over to the board and deliberate and make a decision. So will the city call the first case, please?
Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 21-26. The appellant, Scott Milliken of Habitat for Humanity owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of four feet of west side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. A variance of four feet of east side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 proposed. A variance of 20 feet of east side yard setback requirements for the construction of a shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed. A variance of 20 feet of west side setback requirements for the constructions of a shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed. A variance of 242 square feet of the minimum floor area, requirements for two three-bedroom units, 1,100 square feet required per unit, 2,200 total square feet required, 979 square feet proposed per unit, 1,958 total square feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Westland Drive between Evergreen Road and Prescott Street at 20436 Westland Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2434-428-012, zoned RT, attached single-family residential. This appeal is to section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? If you could please step to the microphone and identify yourself with your address for us.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Richardson, 59497, Tonster Circle, New Hudson, Michigan.
Okay. Could you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Okay, so we're asking for these variances, obviously, because the setback on each side of the home. It's a duplex, which is going to be a little wider than a normal home. It's a little longer than a normal home, and so we need the variances for that. Then we have the sheds. The reason we're asking for the variance on the shed is they have a garage, but we think that they need somewhere to store lawn mowers and all this, because it's just a one-car garage. And we set it on the back of the property, on the corner there, just to keep it out of the way. The variance for inside to square footage, I think we're about 200 and some square feet under what we have, but can't really expand it any bigger, because we're going to get into more variance to do that.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Before Wade weed reads the facts through the chair to the board, I don't have Joe as the appellant, Scott Milliken is. So Joe, are you able to call him and hold the phone up to the speakerphone so he can authorize you to represent Habitat tonight?
I don't even have my phone with me.
Do you know his phone number?
No.
Is it in the case file at all?
Let me see. Oh, yeah.
Might be on the form that I... Just getting this voicemail.
Okay, so since you're not the appellant, we won't be able to hear the case from you tonight.
I mean, do we want to try to call him again?
I'll send him a text message in case he doesn't recognize the number.
Brianna, was there a different applicant on that first application? Do you have...?
No.
No, it was the same.
Yeah, it was Scott.
I don't think that's a cellphone.
No.
I mean, it said it was Habitat for Humanity, is the message I got. It's not a cellphone, is it? Joe, do you know if that's a cellphone?
Pardon me?
The number that we have here is not a cellphone. I don't believe it's the office.
I tried the 734 number.
It probably is the office number on there. Oh, I see, yeah.
Do you have your cellphone in your car?
It's in the car, yeah.
Did you want to go grab it?
Sure.
I don't think this is called dead airspace.
Yeah, exactly.
We're probably losing tens and tens of viewers right now.
Right.
If we had that many.
Brianna, does the application state that the appellant needs to be present for the case when it's heard, or is there somewhere that maybe we should add a checkbox? Because this has happened.
It states it on the application, right under the appellate information.
Okay.
And then in our instruction sheet, it has it in there as well.
Okay.
And when they apply, I tell them.
Okay. Just curious, again.
It sounds like you reminded him specifically, correct?
Yeah. I told Joe, and I talked to Scott on the phone, and I was like, if you're going to be the appellant, you have to be here tonight.
Right, I thought about it. We could table the case and do the minutes, and then come back to it. So can I have a motion to table case number 2126?
So moved.
Do I have a...? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's five to zero. So next item on the agenda is the minutes from the February 1st meeting. Does anyone have any changes or corrections?
Yeah, I had a couple.
You did? Okay. What page?
Page 20.
Page what?
Yeah, page 20. Page 20, line 26. Mr. Weigum was speaking, and it should be for an audible, it should be...
I'm not having any luck getting a hold of him. He's not answering his phone or...
Okay, we've actually tabled your case, so we're just in the middle of our minutes. So just a moment, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Weigum?
Where it says in audible on line 16, I said "Berg" in Nine Mile. Check the "Berg" there instead of in audible.
Okay.
And there's another one where Mr. Rogers is speaking, and I assume this is what, because he's very well spoken, on page 21, line 7, it says "I supportive of the city," and I assume that it's "I'm."
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Anybody else have any other corrections to the minutes from February 1st? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve with those two changes, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our minutes for the meeting. Can I have a motion to untable case number 2126, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hi there.
Aye.
So no luck reaching the appellant to authorize you?
No.
If I might, to the chair, so I just got ahold of Tim, who's the owner, and he's available. That would work, correct?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, so he has a number here. Let me... I'll text it to you right now.
To me?
Yeah, is that okay?
Is it the 8105?
Yeah, 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 that one, yeah. Forgot to write it for you.
And can you... Who are we calling, just for the record?
The property owner.
This is Tim Ruppler. Hi, Tim.
Hello.
So I have you on speakerphone during the ZBA meeting.
Okay.
Could you just authorize Joe Richardson to represent you?
Sure. Joe Richardson is an authorized representative of Habitat for Humanity of Oakland County.
Okay, and could you also give us your address?
Sure. 150 Osman Street, Pontiac, Michigan.
48342.
Correct, and my last name is Ruggles, R-U-G-G-L-E-S, and I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Oakland County, Inc.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Have a good night.
Okay, you too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Brianna. Nicely done.
Okay, so I think we're at the findings of fact?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For ZBA case 21-26, the appellant, Scott Milliken of Habitat for Humanity owner, actually Joe Richardson of Habitat for Humanity owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. A variance of four feet of west side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. A variance of four feet of east side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. A variance of 20 feet of east side yard setback requirements for the construction of a shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed. A variance of 20 feet of west side yard setback requirements for the construction of a second shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed. And a variance of 242 square feet of the minimum floor area requirement for two three-bedroom units, 1,100 square feet required per unit, 2,200 total square feet required, 979 square feet proposed per unit, and 1,958 total square feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Westland Drive between Evergreen Road and Prescott Street at 20436 Westland Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2434-428-012, zoned RT, attached single-family residential. The subject property is currently undeveloped. The former single-family residential home was demolished in 2018. Properties to the north, east, and west are zoned R1 single-family residential and are developed with single-family homes fronting both Westland Drive and Melrose Street. The property to the south across Westland Drive is zoned RT and is RT-attached single-family and is undeveloped. The total site contains .46 acres of land with 100 feet of frontage along Westland Drive and a depth of 200 feet. The property was rezoned in June 2020 from R1 single-family residential to RT-attached single-family residential in anticipation of the construction of a two-family unit. The recently approved site plan reflects the construction of a 2,688 square foot, two-unit duplex to be constructed by Habitat for Humanity. The city of Southfield's current Sustainable Southfield Master Plan, which was adopted in 2016, expresses the need for diverse housing options and price levels so that all persons, regardless of income, can live in the same community where they work, play, and worship. The elimination of traditional single-family zoning districts in favor of offering a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units, often referred to as missing middle housing, which would be compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes within the same neighborhood, is a continuing theme contained within the planning department's draft master plan update. The preliminary draft master plan is slated to go to the planning commission this month. Current side yard setbacks within the adjacent R1 single-family zoning designation to the northwest and east are eight feet minimum with a required total side yard setback of 20 feet. Proposed setbacks on the east and west sides of the proposed duplex are 26 feet. Current setbacks for accessory structures within the R1 single-family zoning designation is three feet from a side or rear property line. Two sheds are proposed, one for each dwelling unit. Both sheds meet the rear yard setback requirement of 30 feet. However, the proposed setback for shed number one is 10 feet from the west property line, and for shed number two is 10 feet from the east property line. Each of the two units are deficient in minimum floor area by only 121 square feet each. The planning department recognizes that 30-foot side yard setback requirement within the RT district is overly stringent and that the minimum floor area requirement per unit may also be too high, especially since the city is working towards the diversification of housing types and options within existing neighborhoods. Planning department will be working towards revising these requirements within the RT district in the zoning ordinance as a result.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is that the proposed variances be approved. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed duplex and reduced side yard setbacks will have minimal impacts on the open space feel between the duplex and the existing residential homes to the east and west. The proposed side yard setback variances for the principal duplex structure will not have any other adverse effects on surrounding properties, especially since the provided 26-foot setback on both sides are much greater than the required setbacks for standard R1 single-family zoning, which range from eight feet to 12 feet. The proposed side yard setback variances for the two proposed sheds will not have any other adverse effects on surrounding properties, especially since the provided 10-foot setback on both sides are much greater than the required setbacks for accessory structures within the standard R1 single-family zoning, which are only three feet from the side or rear property lines. The total floor area of 1,958 square feet is more in keeping with the sizes of existing structures within the neighborhood, as opposed to the minimum of 2,200 square feet. The proposed duplex development is in line and is in keeping with both the existing adopted city comprehensive master plan, as well as the draft master plan update, both of which identify the need for diverse housing options, specifically multi-unit residential units mixed into traditional single-family neighborhoods. The planning department recognizes that 30-foot side yard setback requirement within the RT district is overly stringent and that the minimum floor area requirement per unit may be too high, especially since the city is working towards the diversification of housing types and options within existing neighborhoods, and planning will be working towards revising these requirements within the RT district in the zoning ordinance as a result.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
I'd just like to say thank you for being so accommodating.
Okay, thank you. We will open public comment. Seeing no one in the auditorium, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Weigum?
My understanding is, is that you're going to have two families that will live here? It's a duplex?
What's, two what?
Two families.
Yes.
Are to live here.
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, will this be sold to them, or will they rent it, or what?
These units would be sold.
Would be sold?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed that there is a very large tree in the front yard. It's probably 75-plus years old. You got a big X on it. I assume you're cutting it down.
Yes.
Is that in the way of the construction?
Yes.
Okay. I would appreciate the city writing this down when you're doing it, because there is an impact, okay? Your sheds, I assume one will be for each resident.
Correct.
Okay. I did talk to your neighbor to the west. He was out in his shorts, and it was colder than Blitzen. And I asked him about it, and he says, "Oh, yeah, they're going to put up a nice, big place." So he had no problem with it. I said, "You know, they're going to cut this tree down." And he says, "Yeah, I wish they'd cut mine down, too." So apparently, people don't like trees anymore. But other than that, I have no comment. I think Habitat for Humanity is a good outfit, and I support this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I am curious why we never got a plan, what the house looks like. We just got a site plan, so...
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Rogers, would you... Mr. Richardson, do you have any...
I turned it all in. We had it at our last meeting. They showed it.
Well, that, yeah, that was city council, but you don't have anything with you that has the...
Yeah, I do.
The picture of the duplex?
Through the chair to the board, I only have the site plan. I don't have any elevations.
It sounds like maybe Mr. Richardson has something. Do you have something on your phone? Is that what you were looking for?
I got my laptop here.
Oh, okay, great. Actually, if I might, I actually just emailed some photos to the mayor for his state of the city address, and I have it on my phone, if, you know... Can you email it to me, sir? Yeah, I can. And I can also... Oh, are you able to pull it up there then, Bree?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, just sent. And I hadn't seen this until today, actually, so...
Can you make it bigger?
What's that? Yeah, that's the only one that I have.
That's what it's supposed to look like?
Yep, that's what it's going to look like.
That's nice. Just wanted to see what we were trying to, you know...
Sure, that's not what I expected, so thanks for asking.
Okay. All right, well, that being said, I totally approve of these variances. I'm just curious, is this RT zoning change from R1 apply to only neighborhoods where the either the income of housing is a certain level, or is it just the standard around on the neighborhood fits the size of the duplex?
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Rogers, I know that there were a handful of properties that, I believe, Habitat acquired, and that this is the intent for a couple of those various... So this is just this parcel that's zoned RT, and then they have a couple others on the south side of Westland as well that were rezoned, but everything around it is remaining R1. And I think it's just...
So it's a parcel-by-parcel...
Right, parcel-by-parcel basis, and I think it's kind of something that you may be seeing more often, but again, that's why we're kind of looking at amending the zoning ordinance so that it doesn't have to keep coming back here. It's just kind of something that's more new, a technique that, you know, that we're starting to try to, you know, work these RT units into the, you know, neighboring R1 or R2.
You know, I like the idea. That's why I'm... It should be incorporated as soon as possible. I mean, there's all these... That part of town, there's a lot of vacant lots. There's houses that have been or are on the verge of needing to be demolished, and they fit the criteria for the width to put a duplex up. And yes, they would have to come back in front of us, but if you change the zoning board code, you know, we won't have to see that anymore, obviously. But other than that, I approve the variances that are being requested.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it. I support what Habitat is doing here, and I just note that I bought my house from Habitat in their joint venture with the city, and I've worked with Mr. Richardson in the past. And I support what they're doing here. I have no issues with the variances, and apparently their neighbors don't either, so...
Great. All right, thank you. Mr. Havas? Okay, thank you. Sarah, I do have one question. So I do notice that there's like, you know, small concrete patio at the rear of the home.
Yes.
If they wanted to add any other exterior patio on the east or west, would that fit within the setback once it's rezoned?
If I might, to the chair, if it's not covered, if it's just flat work, that's not considered a structure, so it wouldn't have to meet the setback. Wayne can confirm that.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, but if it would, you know, if it was something that was being proposed that had a roof or a canopy, it would have to come back for additional variances.
Okay. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion for me? Mr. Weigum?
Sure.
Thank you.
In regard to ZBA case 21-26, the appellant, Scott Milliken of Habitat for Humanity owner, requesting the following variance from the board. Variance of four feet of west side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. A variance of Variance of four feet of west side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed; A variance of four feet of east side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed; A variance of 20 feet of east side yard setback requirement for the construction of a shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed; A variance of 20 feet of west side setback requirement for the construction of a shed, 30 feet required, 10 feet proposed; And a variance of 242 square feet of minimum floor yard requirements for two three-bedroom units, 1,100 square feet required per unit, 2,200 total square feet required, 979 square feet proposed per unit, 1,950 total square feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Westland Drive between Evergreen Road and Prescott Street at 20436 Westland Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2434-428-012, zoned RT-attached, single-family residential. I move that we grant this proposal based on the following: The proposed duplex and reduced side yard setback will have minimal impacts on the open space feel between the duplex of the existing residential homes to the east and west. The proposed side yard setback variance for the principal duplex structure will not have any other adverse effects on the surrounding properties, especially since the provided 26-foot setback on both sides are much greater than the required setbacks for standard R-1, single-family zoning, which range from 18 feet to 12 feet. The proposed side yard setback variance for the two proposed sheds will not have any other adverse effect on the surrounding property, especially since the provided 10-foot setback on both sides are much greater than the required setbacks for accessory structures within the standard R-1, single-family zoning, which are only three feet from the side on rear or rear property lines. The total floor area of 1,958 square feet is more in keeping with the size of existing structures within the neighborhood as opposed to the minimum of 2,200 square feet. The proposed duplex development is in line and in keeping with both the existing adopted city comprehensive master plan as well as the draft master plan update, both of which identify the need for diverse housing options, specifically multi-unit residential units mixed into traditional, single-family neighborhoods. The planning department recognizes that the 30-foot side yard setback requirement within the RT district is overly stringent and that the minimum floor area requirements per unit may be too high, especially since the city is working towards the diversification of housing types and options within existing neighborhoods. The planning department will be working towards revising these requirements in the RT residential within the zoning ordinance as a result.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Your requests for variances are granted. You know, continue to work with the city on your permits and whatever else is needed. But that concludes our public hearing for this evening, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you like, would you like the copy of your drawings?
I know, I've got several. Thank you.
Okay, and then next on the agenda, we can bypass the minutes that we already took care of, and our next meeting on March 15th.
Through the chair to the board, we have five cases for March 15th, three residential and two sign cases. And the three residential, I believe, I have to confirm with Wayne, but are all for new construction setbacks. Is that right, Wayne?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any miscellaneous? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All right, all those in favor? Aye?